Yeah, yeah, the stick. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 20th City Council Workshop and City Council Meeting for Morgan's Point Resort. So we'll start off with citizens' comments. I just checked the sheet. There are none unless somebody signed up in the last 22.6 seconds. Nope, okay, all right, good deal. Then we will move right into the regular agenda on the workshop. Let me make sure I got my right papers here. So, so, discussion 25043. We're going to discuss EDC acquiring use of city-owned property along Lake Forest Drive for a tiny village. Ms. Linda, please, if you would like to, come on up.
So hopefully you received all of our paperwork. And our last proposal is we're asking for the plus or minus three acres for economic development. So it's to get your permission just for that. So if you say yes, then we'll go ahead and put together a business plan for our first choice, which is the tiny business village. But basically, we'd like to use that property for economic development of some kind. So, any questions?
I saw that there were a couple of comments by the fire chief and the police chief, and I was wondering if you could just address some of them.
I didn't see those.
Oh. Let's see, I'll see if I can find them.
Okay. Okay, so our thought is we're going to, we're proposing putting another field fence, the same that's in, right on the road, that would separate from all of that area. So we would be farther in, towards the residential area, and quite a ways away from the firing range and where most of the field work's done, as far as I can tell.
Linda, did you get a letter made in June 4th?
Whose letter?
Okay, that's probably pretty important.
Oh, thanks. So can you just tell me in a nutshell, rather than me sit here and read it?
Well, actually, so, we have both, both police and fire here tonight. If they, yeah, gents, if you guys, yeah.
Sure, that would be, that'd be easiest.
While they're, while they're coming up, I have, I do have a question, just for mine. So, when this initially came up, we were talking about that chunk of land over there by the safety center, I think the same one that, and then we looked over by four corners and now we're back over there, so.
Right, right, because the private property, especially that corner, is just, there's too many layers of ownerships and leaseholders and that type of thing. Plus, it really is a dangerous corner, so we would have to make even more effort as far as a fence around it, so it got more expensive. And then if we keep it on city property, assets stay as city property. That's kind of why we backed off on it.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know, and that was just for, in my head.
And Cox, we found out Cox Circle is really not a street.
Okay.
So that didn't help.
Oh, here we go. Hear me now?
Gotta be green.
Gotta be green, okay.
You made the comment that the EDC would use that property for something, or some purpose. My understanding is this specifically for the tiny village, is that not correct?
What we did is we split it up. Originally, it was, yes, but to ease everybody's mind on the council of what you're voting for, because we've worked for a year and a half on this, and that's actually the easy part of it. So the next part is actually putting the plan together. So if, if y'all say no for economic development, no, you can't use it, then I don't want to put that extra year and a half in. So, so it's like asking permission, can we use that for economic development of some kind? If you say yes, then put a proposal out, and our first choice would be the tiny business village. So if you say no on that, then we probably try to come up with another idea.
So if, if we did say yes, there was a few questions about like the electrical.
Yes.
It's so close to the trees. Would you be putting, would you be running lines underground? What, what do you plan to do for electrical?
Okay, so that was one of the thoughts, and we talked about it, is actually, buildings would be not underneath the trees. We'd put picnic tables, similar to a park. So electric, yes, we'd probably put it underground, even though we're, we're asking for a pop-up demonstration, a three-year type of thing, it's going to, I would assume, be more expensive to put it underground, but it can always be used for something. So it's city property, can be used for the animal shelter or something, so. Yes, put it underground. And also, we would have one-way traffic. We would put in another gate, so we would not be using the gate by the safety center. We'd be quite at the first bend, asking for that part. And we're asking for that much property because of parking, because that's the issue of having events at the parks. Neighbors are mad because you're parking on their yard, you're blocking their driveway, so we'd like to get the parking off the road if we can, so we'd need more space.
So since these are public buildings, do they fall under ADA compliance?
From what I understand, since they're not permanent, they'd be sitting on top of blocks or skids, but we would, because that's part of what we want the draw, is someone who could come in. I mean, if you could fit your wheelchair into your small building, we want you to be able to do it. So, the buildings, yes, would be ADA compliant. The pop-up tents, it would be just like any other farmer's market, so no.
What about any applicable fire codes?
I would assume we have to follow, we would get a building permit, just like anybody else, and we would have to follow all the codes as anybody else. If a private enterprise wanted to put this in on their property, the same rules should apply to us, because we want to set a good example.
So we don't, you don't have any idea of what cost would be to make them compliant?
No, because that's the next part. It's like, that's going to be a lot of research. So at this point in time, talking about the tiny business village, I think is the next step. So it's, do you agree or not agree on using some of that property for economic development? So I think that's the question we're asking first. So if you say no, then what do we do next to bring any kind of business activity in? Or make it more worthwhile for somebody to bring their business in?
Did you, did you talk to Chief Schutze or Fire Chief?
No, because I was waiting back for the response.
Because I, I would, because you're, you're going to be their direct neighbors, I would like to hear their input before we make a final decision. Would you guys mind, can you just speak on what you think about it? Oh, you do, okay.
Okay, so, and like I say, this would be for economic development blanket, not the tiny business village. So that's basically what we're asking for, step one.
So, and I, just to clarify, I understand that you're looking for a three-year lease?
Yes.
And then we would give you at least six months notice?
Yes.
Prior to having to vacate if we decided to.
Right.
At least at any point.
Right.
That's what we're approving tonight, then?
Basically, no, just can we use it for economic development or not? So that's, that's it, no specifics.
No speci, oh, so the lease isn't even on the.
No, no, just like, if you say no, we don't want it for, it's only going to be for fire and safety. Then we got to look somewhere else.
Okay, all right.
If there is anyplace else.
I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we wanted to make that easy for you guys to not have to do, voting for something that you don't have all the information. On the EDC, make it easy on us not to put another, you know, six months of research into it, and then you say, no, we really don't want economic development there. So that's kind of where we're going. Thanks.
I'm just kind of, I mean, the three years, where'd that number come from? I mean, I'm trying to rationalize what, trying to get three.
From research with other ones, it takes about three years to get up and running. So it would be, we could prove ourselves or not, hopefully within that three-year period. If it's shorter than that, you don't give it a chance. And so what we're hoping, that if nothing's being done as far as the property, that you'll extend it another year or six months or whatever, so we can keep growing. And we're hoping it's going to be such a popular thing that it stays there permanently, and maybe we could upgrade it to, ooh, a septic system, that type of thing.
Chief, the statement that you're talking about, that's the one that you provided? Okay, because I just gave that, the ones that you provided to Linda, so I don't know if you want to cover that, or Linda, if you want time to review that?
Is this happen to do just with the tiny business village? Or is it putting anything up there? As far as tiny business village or just economic development? Okay, so I, I would say this is something we can address next time, the next step, because, okay, so economic development, what if that property is just used for an outdoor event space, as pop-up, just what we did in the parks? So, you know, if that's the economic development, and tiny village never happens, you know, type of thing.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, if, yeah.
Understand that we weren't aware that you were changing the plan, I say, EDC was changing the plan. So everything that our responses developed was developed in response to a tiny village specifically. But, in all the sense, the same thing for law enforcement-wise on safety and things still apply, in a sense, depending on what you're going to use the proposed land for. So just keep that in mind. So, our response, so we received an email from Dorothy, from Councilmember Allen, asking us to weigh in on our, our objective opinion on the, on the tiny village concept. For the police department, our response. Yes, the use of the location, that's correct, yes. And so the proposal, yeah, so the proposed location, you know, for, for people here sitting here tonight, that is right next to the public safety center. It extends from basically what we would call the pit entrance to the, basically the curve on Lake Forest, kind of, sort of. Yes, this, I meant the curve, what we call the curve. Yeah. So, so based on that proposed location, so the proposed location that was there has been used in previous years for fire rescue and law enforcement training. If we use that, if that proposed location is, is removed for our use, we would, we would remove the various types of training that we're able to provide, which would cost us, you know, money to move locations for search training. The, the proposed location removes, based on the diagram that we saw, it would remove the unpaved driveway that we used to go to our temporary animal shelter, which would cause us to have to figure out a way to go to and from our temporary animal shelter. And then, you know, our temporary animal shelter is used up to 72 hours. That's where we hold our animals that we locate, just in case we are able to reunite them with their family, if, if, if we're able to. So that's a pretty, pretty significance. The only way that we can get to it right now, there's two ways, but one is through another gated entry that we have to manually unlock. The other way is through the main entrance and, and off to the left. So that proposed, looking at the diagram, it would remove that drive. The, the proposed location, as far as safety concerns, it backs up to the police department's firing range. Our firing range is pretty large, and it's almost, to describe it to you, it's almost a fishbowl. We shoot in about 180-degree degrees of targets, and we're shooting dynamic, so we're moving and shooting, as a police department, we're training. So that backs up to that. Based on that location, these training courses and qualifications that take place multiple times a year and at varying times of the day of the week. Our department is also a partner with outside agencies, such as the Bell County Sheriff's Department, the Bell County Attorney's Office, the Bell County District Attorney's Office, Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and Texas Department of Public Safety, or DPS. They use our firing range as well. For something to back up to that, that's so close, it would also affect the ability for them to conduct their trainings in a safe and make sure that we're, you know, some, the tiny village or whatever economic development program is being used there is not being met next door with gunfire. And so, like I said, those also trainings occur at various times of the year, various times of the day, based on the needs and requirements of that, those agencies. So it provides a unique safety component for the proposal that we saw and could disrupt proposed uses of, of their plant based on that. The proposed location is also been designated as a landing zone for air medical ambulances and other aircraft, should we need to evacuate a patient or mass people from areas that we cannot land a helicopter in the city. It's kind of a unique thing that if we can't land a helicopter in certain areas and we need to get either a patient out and air evac is the only way or the best way, it would be a stopgap. We would land a helicopter there, and then we would transport from wherever that patient is to there, to, and then transport them by helicopter to wherever they need to go. And then, of course, the last thing that we have, actually, it's not the last thing, second to last thing, the proposed location is prime real estate for any expansion or addition to a city essential function, such as administration, public works, public utilities, police, or fire. The city council voted in a strategic planning session to address the need for an expanded or new public safety center within the next one to five years. Using that land for a period of three years or more would likely impact the ability to address that plan. And especially since, since Linda, you said that about three years is the startup time, so that would just be getting into your, you know, three years down the road, you'd be starting up, and if it turns out to be a fruitful adventure, and we have to address expansion of city services, then we would be disrupting your EDC plans there. And so, and the last thing is, based on that, Lake Forest, right now, is, especially depending on the time of the day, that area between the police department and the first curb, depending on the type of, time of the day, is pretty bad for potential, especially on weekdays with school traffic to and from school, when school is in session. And it could cause some potential for, for traffic issues. And then, of course, with that being there, you know, we're already experiencing some of that, we don't want to compound that, and because our emergency vehicles have to come in and out of that egress, they're right there, especially for Terrence's larger apparatuses. Police cars are a little different, but for Terrence's larger apparatuses, they're going to need a little bit more turning radius and things like that. Our recommendation is that we just seek other city, city alternative locations. Think about repurposing unused portions of parks. I know Linda mentioned parks, and that residents aren't happy about that. Maybe vehicular traffic, but that would be for the citizens to weigh in, or that was our recommendation, is to look at maybe unused portions of park that we can repurpose for EDC's plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, I'll be, I'll be brief. I think Chief Schutze's covered most of the concerns. To be, for the record, I'm either for or against it, and I do want to apologize. We received your email on May 21st. We had an exchange on May 22nd, and our direction from the senior manager's office was to directly contact with the city, so that's, that's the reason you didn't hear anything else from us, so I do apologize for that. From the fire rescue standpoint, we do share some of the concerns that Chief Schutze mentioned about the land use and the long-term development of the area. However, no one's ever really done a study on where the fire department should be, and so if it comes down to that, I don't know that the patient will be in the same place. That said, I mean, that's kind of for you and the EDC and council to govern. Our, our chief concern is life safety, and the one thing that'll become salient, I think, later in our conversation today, is the 21 fire code. You'll need to follow a site plan and file, file that with a building official and just go through those processes. As long as everything is addressed in the site plan, and it passes international building code, and we can, you know, operate and go forward with that, our rescue department has no issue with that at all. That's, I think, I like the tiny village idea. It's a good cop, bad cop, you have been to a couple of them, but I can't say for sure that your location's the best, but I can say as long as you stick to the fire safety standards, and some of the electrical, like bearing electrical, which long-term is going to serve the city, that's one area we have a lot of issues with overhead power lines. And that's it, that's all I've got. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any additional questions for Linda or the chief's reference to EDC?
Just, just curious if our code compliance officer has weighed in on this at all?
I do not have an answer to that.
No, 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 they, no, okay. I, because I just want to make sure that we're staying in our realms.
I do have a question, mostly for the chief. Do these negatives mean that that area can never be used for economic development? Do you do training there?
For us? No, we're just thinking, again, based on the EDC plan and the council.
Well, I'll go the good cop, bad cop, since I was, I don't know which one I was in Terrence's analogy. We are not opposed to the tiny village, don't get me wrong. We're talking strategically, or based on the strategic location of that. That's all we're talking about. Now, no, does that say that it can't be ever used? No, that's, I mean, that's at the discretion of, of you men and women here on council, and, and of course, the citizens, naturally. What we're saying is, based on the strategic plan, strategic planning session that the council just recently had, it was a one-to-five-year plan for expanding a public safety center. Now, keep in mind, that's not just a public safety center, because when you look around, the city does not own very much large real estate. And so when we talk about where we would put something like that, we also think about future years down the road, such as city hall. City hall is outgrowing its space as well. So what does the next city hall look like? Or, or public works, for example, or public utilities? We start thinking about that and thinking about how much real estate we have available, that was the only reason that we're saying, hey, in a one-to-five-year plan, we're at least looking at conducting a study in about, in, in about five, you know, couple of years from now, that study could be completed and construction could already be started on that. Now, whether that's a public safety center or a combined facility of administration, or, or, you know, or, and public safety or everything, that's the only real estate that we have available at this time. And then, combined with Linda's three-year, just based off of Linda saying, hey, we want to use it for three years, we also don't want to disrupt what Linda or the EDC has planned, saying that, hey, if it's about three years to get off the road, and then about three years, we talking about, okay, we can start construction on whatever that is, and it, say that is the viable place that a study says, then now we have two conflicting interests here that we're, we're disrupting one or the other. And so that's, that's just basically what we're saying, is to keep in mind on that. It's not to say, you know, that Linda can't use it or never use it, it's just based on what council deems necessary, what's the strategic plan. That's basically what we're saying.
Thank you. I, I guess then I would ask Linda, if there's a good chance in three years, your project would have to move or close, would you still be enthusiastic about it?
Yes, because this is basically, I was trying to sell this as a pop-up demonstration, and it's, it's something that our residents might love, that we, we start out, instead of building a multimillion-dollar enterprise, we start small to see if the residents like this place to gather, that type of thing, helping entrepreneurs get started. And yes, it's one of those things that, in other cities, it became so popular that it stayed, another one, they dismantled it. So it's, it's, it's basically a, a trial and error without spending a whole lot of money. So yes, I think we would still like to do it. The sheds are not permanent, so they can be sold back off. So the only infrastructure that hopefully could be reused by the city would be the electric that we would put in, and then the fencing, it's just the field fencing, it can be rolled back up and used someplace else, and then also the gravel that we bring in, so we're not spending a fortune on the roads. The, the only reason why I included that road was because of the expense. So if that was one of the, the holdouts, we'd move the fence in and build another road. So we could do that for parking, so that the, the fire and police could still use the back road. But that was, it was just a cost-saving thing to include that. Or just put another gate in to get back to the animal shelter.
So to summarize, would you agree with the statement that what you're asking for today is the permission to use that area, not, no specifics, and even if the city has possibly other plans, you're still willing to do the work?
Yes. Any other questions?
Okay, so as this is a discussion item, counsel, I would encourage you to just go through everything again, and probably what we need to do is bring it forward next month for a decision. I think we owe it to them to make a decision one way or the other, so we're not keeping them in limbo.
That would be very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. And we're going to jump right in, I'm going to try to, let's see, we're 27 minutes in, which, that is, this is a very worthy topic, don't get me wrong, but your community outreach and event, home-based businesses, discussion 25044. Linda, do you want to just roll right into that?
Yes, that, and that's real quick. So really, EDC is offering to host a community outreach for this, basically updating the home occupation ordinance. It's back in planning and zoning, but we'd like to go ahead and, and offer, because I have the contacts with business owners, just basically to see how we can make that ordinance a little bit more updated and more fair, to be honest. So that's all we're asking for, is, do you want to pursue that? Yes? Oh, bless you, ask question. So it's one of those things, do we put that on the back burner, or do we chat with it? Dorothy, did you have a question? Yes. Um, just, do you want to, for EDC to host it, of which we would have code enforcement planning zone, really putting on the event, but we would just host it, do the advertising, that kind of thing? But yeah, basically a town hall, something similar to the drainage town hall, basically, that we have, which was great. So I would like us to continue that kind of thing with our ordinances, because no one understands them.
So the purpose is, the end result would be you're buying our ordinances on home-based businesses, and you're just trying to get input from the home-based businesses themselves?
And residents. And residents, so it would be open to everybody. Yeah, so it would be open to everybody. So it would have a, you know, I love it, I don't like it, you know, that type of thing. Yes, yeah, we're, we're just hosting it, so we wouldn't facilitate, it's planning and zoning and, and code enforcement. So I just want to push it, I want to keep it rolling. So.
So Neil, as we're not making a decision on that, we can still give them the guidance to go ahead and move forward on that, is that correct? Yeah. So, counsel, if nobody has any issue with that, if, unless there's any disagreement to that. Dorothy, you're just going to have to holler, hon, I can't, I can't see you behind me, so if you got something, just yell. So, looking for a consensus on that, then, is to give EDC guidance to go ahead and start planning the, the town hall, essentially working with P and Z, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I don't know yet, I don't think so. I think we just get the, the community center, and if we can get Mike Reeves in and planning and zoning, I think we're good. So yeah, I guess it is staff.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see, discussion 25045, discuss council members rotating, attendance through P and Z, and we've got Ken and/or counsel, and I know Orion is here taking over for Ken, is that what I just heard? For Sam, okay. See ya.
Did we do it, did we do it to you?
Okay. Yeah, so the discuss, I mean, unless you guys have anything specific you want to address, I know the discussion has been a member of council attending the P and Z meetings, kind of rotating through, not unlike I think we do with the, the coffees after city council, so I personally think that's a fabulous idea, and I'd be happy to, to join that rotation if council wants me to, so, open to any discussion on that at all. on that at all. No, no, get, get up there.
The only thing I would, I would caution?
Name an address.
My, my thought here is, there are specific, there's specific legislation for planning and zoning. I would just be cautious that the council, if, if they did rotate in and out, that it, that there was not an appearance anywhere of a council member trying to influence planning and zoning, and the decisions they're making at their meetings, because some of them hold their own weight when they come to council. That's, that's, that's my two cents.
Yeah, this would be, if I'm under, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Dorothy, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think that's a really good point. And in fact, some things have changed since we, since P and Z asked to have a council person at their meeting. Number one, they're submitting their agendas to us before their meetings. Since council meets before P and Z in a month, that they're, we were able to discuss some input into their meeting agenda as a group, which I think is really important. They're the ones that requested that a council member come to their meetings, but I think it was just so that they wouldn't go left, if we, as a council, were thinking that maybe should go right. But I think with the agendas, and we are having better communication, I think, with P and Z, and I think Sam has really implemented some good procedures that have helped us communicate better as a team, between council and P and Z. So I feel strongly that we have to be at P and Z meetings, as long as we get to weigh in on the agendas before their meetings, which we've been doing.
There's also a risk that the presence of one of us might be viewed as a consensus, which it wouldn't be.
Correct. So I guess I would ask P and Z, do they still want us at their meetings?
Yeah, that's, I think, you want to speak on that? Yeah. You do any good.
I, I think we'd love for you to come to the meetings, but if there's a conflict that's out there, that may be perceived with having a council member at P and Z, then I think we shouldn't go forward with that. We've had them in the past, you know, I've been on P and Z now for a little over 10 years, and we've had them in and out from time to time. It's not been consistent, so either if we're going to do it, we probably want to do it consistently, but if we're not going to do it, we just back off of having that at all. I, I think our main function here is communication between the two of us, so that we both know what direction we are heading, so that P and Z cannot step out in the wrong direction, or that we would start something that city council is not even aware of. And I think we've addressed that internally on P and Z, with getting it on to the discussions of our workshops on city council, so that y'all see where we're going. We may not have it done yet, but we're bringing it up, we're bringing it forward first, giving y'all an opportunity to see and say, nope, don't go there, or yes, please do.
Yeah, one of my concerns is, is that if a member of council, is that your, your meeting, would that be perceived by the community as trying to influence whatever P and Z is doing? I appreciate the fact that communication's open and great, and I think bringing the communication to a workshop, or to a council meeting monthly, would suffice, as far as for me, but I'm not, can't speak for everyone else. But I just don't want anything to be perceived, you know, that, that you got council member attending their meetings, and they might not be attending a different meeting.
Agree.
Okay, so your thoughts, I want your thoughts, because I think, head of the P and Z, you would, would you, would you, would you like a council member to just, you know, that we would rotate and just take turns and show up and observe your meeting, or would you prefer, is it not necessary?
You know, I don't really think it's necessary now, I think initially, whenever the brand-new city council came, you know, came forward, it was a problem. We didn't know what directions to go. We visited with Dennis about that, we kind of got a little bit better understanding of where P and Z fits, within the whole, you know, the whole administration of this. And I think with that, with us sharing these discussion items on the agendas, has brought us to a better part of being able to say, we do kind of know where we're going, and forward. So, I, I don't believe it's necessary, love still to have you there, I mean, you're still a citizen, and you don't have to necessarily be a city council member to come to P and Z, because it's open to everybody. But we'd love to have you there, but I don't think, at this point in time, I don't think it's necessary.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that's when it came up originally, was because there was some confusion between the two departments.
Correct.
So, and the P and Z.
Correct. Yeah, it's gotten a lot better.
Very good. That's great to hear.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then, from both P and Z and from council, is that, right now, we don't think there's a, it's not necessary, it's a bonus. So, I guess guidance, you guys just don't expect council to be there unless specifically needed, kind of thing. Does everybody agree on that? Fair statement? Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, let's see, 25046, Smith Park Nature Trail Proposals.
I made it on time.
Thank you.
You're being nice.
No, no, you're right on time, right on time. Appreciate you, appreciate you coming.
Okay, I sent this presentation in last week, so I don't know if you have it. You do?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I do have a, a handout, so I don't need a thumb drive for the presentation?
I think everybody has it.
Okay. Well, I will hand out some additional information. Is there anyone with the presentation on screen? I have a thumb drive, it says Smith Park. Not, I can bring it up on my computer. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city, thank you to the council for letting me present this proposal tonight. Also, I want to say thank you to a lot of people. Well, Mr. Bishop serves on the Morgans Point Council Parks and Recreation Committee, as does Mr. Leinhardt, and then myself, and then we have some others. And then with us tonight, and I've honestly never met this gentleman, but Keller Matthews, Mr. Matthews, are you happy to be here tonight?
Mr. Mojer, would you stay close to the mic, because people are listening.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Matthews, is he here this evening? Okay, I just want to make sure, I had six o'clock for this meeting, so, on my calendar. And then, so the members of the Morgans Point Parks and Recreation Committee is Stephen Bishop, then April Agnosis, we have Amy Cervantes, we have Philip Jennings. Philip was actually, he was supposed to present tonight, he was unable to present, because he's in Washington DC, presenting at the Amazon Conference, where he's, he's one of the key speakers. And then we have also on the council, Bruce Leinhardt, we have Stan Simmons, he's with the Texas Naturalist Organization, along with Keller Matthews, and then Cali Tullos, who takes a lot of notes for us, and does a terrific job, and then myself, Scott Mojer. And so, this is, the Morgans Point Parks and Recs Committee is kind of a fairly new addition, I think there may have been one at one time, but as far as being an active body, I've got all kinds of technology here, but as far as being an active body... It's fine. But anyway, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, chief. But, so, right here, just to start with, this is a view from Smith Park. And so some of you may say, well, what? There you go. All right. Appreciate the oohs and ahs. But what we're introducing tonight is the trail, uh, Smith Park Trail System. And what you need to know is, Smith Park is not new at all. Morgans Point, of course, was founded in 1970, and Mr. Smith, which is a little bit of his name out there, and I believe his name is Pat, just that. But, uh, he was an active project, and that's Morgans Point from 1975, 1968 to 1975. So Smith Park is in the north point, and if you see that, that is actually over Cedar Ridge Park, that's the marina over there, so that picture from the front is that curve right along there. So the park actually covers 32 acres, which is actually more owned by Morgans Point. In addition to those 32 acres, is another 11.6 acres that's owned by the Corps of Engineers. So together, you have, you know, 43 acres, and so we actually have three, and how you get there is, if you're going along Great West Loop, this is actually a hidden gem.
Yeah.
You go along Great West Loop, you go on to North Walnut Court, you turn on to that, and at the end is the park itself. All right. So what we're proposing is, and this has already been taped and walked off, is we're proposing three different trail systems. And as you can see, Loop A is blue, and then we tell a little bit about it, is a half-mile loop is optional extension, which the optional extension is shown in green, and that adds one mile of additional park, I mean, of trails, and then Loop B, which is another half-mile. So we're looking at two and a half, or two miles of trails. It winds through the wooded areas, there's open green spaces, there's a natural water feature of being not only the lake, but there's also a dry creek bed. And what's really neat about this dry, dry creek bed, is it's actually also a natural spring, and there's a pond down there, and if you've ever been down there, there's actually goldfish in this pond. And so it's, it's really neat, I don't know who threw them in there, but it might be just a friend. But, anyway, there's goldfish, and hopefully no one has their goldfishes. But then, also, the Loop D is, and they have kind of a variance when it comes to how hard the trail is. The extension would be the harder trail, but every one of the trails is very easy. I have a fused ankle with three screws in my left leg, and I walked it. The only difficult part for me was the system, which will come to, that you need a trail. The rest of it, I don't know if you had to switch gears there. There you go. So, at the trail, we have some pictures here, so when you pull up, the problem, a lot of this, is that it only holds about 10 or 12 cars. So if people pull up there, and there's already five cars there, depending how those five cars are parked, you, you people would just turn right around, because it can fill up fast. Our recognition to the city is that there's, there's, that bell's been turned out a little bit, and you can easily triple that option of speed.
Hey, Scott, can I interrupt you for a second? Can, can you spin the lectern, the podium, depending on which day of the week it is, and what we're calling it, and try to, I know you're multitasking, but try to use the mic for us?
Absolutely. Can you hear me? Better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and to those who are a little bit hearing impaired, I apologize, I also wear hearing aids, so I understand what it's like not to hear. There's a little, actually with this park, there's also a little stone place there, a placard that recognizes Mr. Smith, and you can see his name on there, and everything I said is the project director here in Morgans Point. And as you can see from the pictures, it's actually beautiful when you pull up, you can actually see the lake, there's already some picnic tables there, there's some benches, trash cans, but the trails are very, very, very rough. But the beautiful part of the trails, if they have been in existence over the years, what we're talking about is working with the Texas Naturalist, who would also maintain these trails over the years, so that's a big thing. Just to let you know, they worked with the Chalk Falls area, and then the area over by Still House, and so all those trails down below Lake Belton and Still House, that's the group that helped design those and do this. So we're talking about people with experience right around here, but also a group that has experience working with the Corps of Engineers. And so if we want to be able to access that land, they have already done that. And so that's a big plus. So, here's the current trail conditions, you kind of have a before picture, and then before, we have trees that are in some of the trails, we have a lot of invasive plant species, this is a really big deal to the Texas Naturalists, because they like removing those invasive species. And so what, and then, a lot of it is just simply, as you know, around the lake, we grow limestone, so it, you know, we have limestone plants everywhere in those trails, and that limestone, we just need people to clear and move it. And so what we're looking at is a crew, who'd be willing to, about six, could be more, could be less, but clear about two and a half miles, and that's, that is a very generous amount. When we say two and a half miles, and we're guessing that would be about two to three weeks. So we want to remove the rock, strip hazards, and then perform some simple leveling in some areas that might require some dirt. So what type of trail are we talking about? We're talking about a trail that's, basically, some of the trees, we need about eight feet tall, not that there's a lot of Shaquille O'Neal's walking around, but we do want to have it tall, where people can, we know that trees will continue to grow, but eight foot high by six foot wide, we want to be able to, people go shoulder to shoulder, and pass each other on the trail, and, so that's what we're looking at there. Kind of the points of interest, of course, there's a picture of the little pond I was talking about, with the goldfish in that dry creek, but it actually does have springs that feed that pond. And then the lake access, as you can see from the picture, that's, that's a whole lot of nice lake view. And I walked it, I know that Mr. Bishop walked it, I know that Mr. Leinhardt walked it, has anybody else, I'm sure the Morgans Point Police Department have, but it's a beautiful view. And so we have a, we have something right in our backyard, with a little bit of work, would do some great things. Now, here's that dry creek, this is obviously an image that has been photoshopped here, to give an idea. This is something that if we really wanted to make it accessible for people of all ages, and potential, any ADA-ish type, this would be a natural, we're not asking to lay cement, things like that. This would be a natural, we're not asking to lay cement, things like that. Um, but we would want to build a bridge. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Bruce, do you want to talk to that at all?
Oh, I mean, I could, um, I remember right, that bridge is about twenty-two feet long.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is what we were looking at. And the, uh, goldfish pond that's been referenced is right below that where it would be placed to go across that, uh, that, that dry creek bed. Um, so, you know, that, quite honestly, that would be one of the expenses that would, would be incurred in this. But, um, the thing is, once you get that up there, it makes it a whole lot easier to access that trail. People of any, you know, physical condition, uh, if you don't have that little bridge there, it's, it's pretty good little trek down to the bottom of that dry creek and back up. Uh, but it'd be a really beautiful place to have where you could walk across right there and take pictures and do that kind of thing.
And thank.
One of the things that we had bounced around is it could be a great Eagle Scout project, um, because it wouldn't have to be a large bridge. It, it could be, you know, something made out of pressure-treated lumber that is, I won't say the word disposable, but similar to what's at Chalk Falls. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of potential.
Well, not that Darwin's rule always takes effect, but also it's a safety issue in case someone stays on the other side of that, in case it's raining or something. Uh, Darwinism takes care of that a lot of times unfortunately, but it does happen. And, uh, so we have the pond, we have the lake view, but just the natural trees, the wildlife. And again, what we're looking at is not putting a bunch of cement in, but this is a natural surface trail. And if you've walked in Austin around Town Lake, those areas, very, a lot of all the trails, most of them are natural surface trails. It's just a matter of clearing debris, rock, and then sizing the trail. So we have done some cost estimates on this. And, um, and by the way, we've been generous with these estimates. So we want to, uh, under-promise and over-deliver. But we're looking at a clearing crew, it'd be six workers at two weeks, uh, twenty-two dollars an hour. Estimated cost roughly fifteen thousand. Equipment rental, chain, uh, chainsaws, brush cutters, rakes, tools, three thousand five hundred. Disposables, things like chains for chainsaws, string, gas, oil, uh, fifteen hundred. Safety gear, gloves, eye protection, et cetera, approximately five hundred. Uh, I'd go with Harbor Freight maybe on that one because I, I'm not doing a commercial for anyone. I'm not the city. Uh, signage, we'd want to have trailhead, wayfinding, educational signage along the way. That's actually a big part of the Texas Naturalist. They want kids, they want walkers to, uh, read about the, uh, different native species and about the plants. Also seating, be good to have seating along the trail. And then trash bins, it'd be good to have two additional trash bins at a minimum. There's a good chance of an excavator, uh, excavator rental, uh, for a week, it'd be two thousand forty-eight dollars. Crush granite, uh, for some of the, uh, leveling pieces. Uh, but there was a grand total of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight. And then, um, uh, Texas Naturalist, just to let you know about them a little bit. They're a volunteer conservation group with expertise in trail building and ecological restoration. They actively collaborating with the directors Stan Simmons and field expert Keller Williams to ensure sustainable trail design. The person, again, that's Philip Jennings, um, who, who talked to them in person. Also, they've done the Chalk Ridge Falls and the Mother enough State Park. And they want to be a long-term partner to help preserve and manage, uh, Smith Park's natural beauty for our future generations here in Morgan's Point. We've also done an estimated timeline for completion. We realize we're not in charge of this timeline. Uh, but, uh, if we were, uh, the, we'd have the trail open by October thirtieth of this, uh, fall. And, uh, so we would start with, uh, kind of a bottom up here, uh, receiving council approval, uh, this evening. Then there'd be the scheduled trail crews, finalized project timelines, milestones, the legal aspect, probably take over a month. Initial brush clearing for A and B. And A extension August to mid Oc, to mid-September. And then also the same timeframe for leveling the ground, rock. Again, we're looking at a two-week timeframe, potentially three weeks. Bridge construction and signage installation, we put down roughly three period, three weeks for that. Um, again, we're not in charge, but I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Scott, I think Keller is here.
Oh. Mr. Williams, is there anything you would like to add to this? Did you have six o'clock down?
No, I had, that is six o'clock.
Me too.
Sorry.
Keller, could, could you?
Yes, sir.
Roger here.
We just discuss at the workshop is what we do.
In case anyone's not familiar with the Central Texas Master Naturalists, there are about forty-eight chapters in the state. We have about a hundred members in our chapter that includes Bell County, um, out further west to Kempner, maybe Lampasses. Um, they, it's a joint program between Texas Parks and Wildlife and Texas A&amp;M's Ag Extension Service. About half our members are retirees. I see a lot of gray heads here in the room. And if you're looking for something to do that'll get you out in nature, um, it's a wonderful organization comprised of a lot of citizen scientists who are interested in understanding nature and preserving nature. Um, I'm kind of the designated trail specialist for our chapter. I still enjoy trail running and mountain biking and hiking. And, um, I met Philip Jennings probably three or four months ago and we, um, walked, uh, that plot that he thought was an initial outlay. And it looks to me like it's a beautiful place for a trail. It has one, um, troublesome spot where there's an arroyo and there's not an easy footpath across there. Um, we talked about different solutions like building a bridge or using natural stone to make a bridge there. There's already a, um, little natural puddle there that has some fish in it. And it's a pretty interesting, um, little cove back in the woods. I think it'll probably add up to be a mile and a half a trail. And there are ways to make a clover leaf where you can tie different portions of it together. Um, it's through a cedar forest, um, native habitat here that doesn't have a lot of invasives. It's a pretty flat surface that I think would be welcoming to hikers and dog walkers. Probably not so much to bikers because it's pretty short. Most mountain bikers like to ride a six or nine mile trail and this one would be a little short. But it'd be suitable for a beginning mountain biker if somebody wanted to take grandkids out to ride in the woods. I think it'll be, um, flat enough for that. Um, I'd be happy to entertain questions. I've talked to Philip Intermentley during his planning process. It looked to me like the budget that was presented is very realistic and the timeline presented is realistic. Um, and I'm excited that our chapter may be able to help support this effort by, um, there are several of our members who live out here at Morgan's Point who would enjoy, um, doing occasional maintenance out there, picking up trash, trimming brush. Um, we are heavily engaged. We've got a chainsaw crew now that has about half dozen people working out at Chalk Ridge Falls because, uh, you may have heard a, um, small tornado blew through the south side of, um, Stillhouse Hollow Lake two weeks ago and damaged trees at, um, Stillhouse, uh, at Camp Tahoya where we're supporting the Scouts' public opening of Camp Tahoya. And also, um, through Chalk Ridge Falls Parks, we've had a lot of people out using chainsaws to open up trails. Um, and we would expect to, um, offer the same type of support for a trail in your community. Um, we've got a, um, pretty significant, I imagine, twelve to twenty people, it varies year to year, um, who are interested in trail building and trail maintenance. I partly endorse the proposal, um, that the committee has entertained.
How would, uh, additional residents get involved?
Um, a couple avenues. If you want to be involved as a master naturalist, um, we've got a website that's easy to find. Central Texas Master Naturalists. Um, it's a chapter of the Texas Master Naturalist Program. They've got a map on there and you click on Bell County and it'll give you the contact information. We have new classes entering every March for about a twelve-week curriculum where you meet for, uh, four hours a day on Tuesdays. And a lot of times that's for field study or you hear a scientist come in and talk about hydrology or ichthyology or ornithology or geology. Um, those classes just run for that initial three or four-month period. In the first year, we asked that people do forty hours of classroom contact time and eight hours of volunteer work. And then each subsequent year to maintain certification, you do forty hours of volunteer work and eight hours of classroom, uh, learning. It can be online or in person. That's one avenue for engagement is to be a master naturalist. Um, I think that Morgan's Point could also sponsor their own volunteer, um, trail workdays. If you want to have somebody, um, pick up leaves after a particular hailstorm or, um, if there are parties out there, a lot of trash or something that needed a special effort. I think the master naturalist can stay on top of that, but I would also suggest that you develop a Friends of Smith Park Trail, um, who have, who, maybe some people who live nearby there that want to see it well taken care of.
Counsel, what I'd like to do since we're compressed on time, again, it seems like we spend our lives compressed on time, is, uh, I'd like to recommend that, um, thanks gentlemen, all three of you and, and the committee for your hard work. I know it's, um, counsel, I think the best course of action is for you guys to, uh, compile some questions, gather your thoughts, take a look at the proposal in depth and, uh, consider it. Then what I'd like to do is bring it back for formal approval, um, or denial next month if, if that works. Okay, so let's, uh, let's go ahead and that, and, uh, go that direction then. Okay, uh, in the interest of time, residents, please bear with us. We got a little behind today. So I want to cover a couple more things before we adjourn and get into the, into the actual, uh, I just want to get a couple of things out of the way. So what we're going to do is we're going to hold off on the budget discussion in the workshop until after executive session. We'll loop back around to that. Uh, we're also going to do the same thing, counsel, if you look ahead to twenty-five zero fifty, the International Fire Code, uh, that is both discussed in the workshop and then, uh, considered the ordinance. So we'll wrap that right back around, uh, into the, uh, the actual regular session as well. So, uh, Sam, if you would, uh, real quick, twenty-five zero forty-eight and zero forty-nine, um, the revisions. If you could touch on those for us briefly, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Um, so for the ADA revisions, um, I know I shared, uh, the changes that we have recommended to the city council. Um, and I've given about three options. I think there are option A, option B, and option C, depending on the, the kind of details that the city council would like to see in the city ordinances. Um, I, I did, so I did talk to Mike Reeves, the code enforcement officer, and he had a good suggestion to include, um, in the language, um, that I have added is, so everywhere you see in terms of the highlighted, um, bits in the, the changes, um, along with ADA, I've also added in twenty-twelve TAS standards, which is, which are the Texas standards. So, um, Mike thought that it would be a good idea if we add both of these and we mention ADA as well as TAS in the ordinance codes wherever needed. So, um, if the city council members have, would like some more time to kind of look at the language, what kind of sections it needs to be included into, um, then this can be discussed at the next, um, P&amp;Z meeting. Um, however, the city council sees fit.
Counsel, have you guys had a chance to review all that? Any discussion on that one? Or guidance to give?
I looked at it. It looks, it looks good. It looks like a good plan to me to just incorporate it in.
Dorothy, do you have anything back there? I keep forgetting you're back there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure. Uh, it looked very similar to what was presented last month. So I didn't know that the two thousand and twelve accessibility standards was added. Um, what is that? And is that like ADA and that it is not optional, it is not optional? Is it mandatory that we follow, uh, those standards?
So, uh, the Texas standards, um, the Texas accessibility standards are more rigorous. So they're more strict and they have more details. And Mike thought that it would be a good idea if we add those, um, into the language aside from ADA. Now, I think it's, it's, um, a good idea to maybe discuss if you want to keep either or. I think because, you know, we're in the state of Texas, it just makes sense to kind of have TAS as the, the standard language. And ADA can be, uh, an added bonus if the city council sees that, you know, we want to have both the state or the federal regulations as well as the Texas standards, um, included. So just, just for reference, the Texas standards are more detailed, um, in terms of the sections and the specifications.
So what, what kind of requirements would that change for us as a city? Can you give me examples of something that we would have to change because of these standards?
Uh, currently I don't have the examples for the TAS because this was a recommendation from Mike. Um, so I was hoping he could be here to kind of explain what kind of changes we're looking at. But, um, for the next, I think for going forward for the next P&amp;Z meeting, it could be an item that can be discussed in terms of what kind of, um, details are we looking at just for TAS. So with the next city council, you can have this information in terms of, uh, the differences that we're looking at.
I just had a question on the very first one. Um, and that is on the marina. It says animal restrictions. And the way it reads to me is we can't take our dogs out on the boat unless they're like a sea dog. I didn't quite understand, uh, taking animals out in public recreation areas like parks and the marina, um, would be restricted in any way. So that's just one example, but when I looked at that, I went, I don't understand that.
Right, right. No, that, that, that makes sense. And so option A is a more detailed, um, section, which is basically I looked at the City of Austin, um, ordinance codes and how they've included ADA language. Um, so I looked at that and then saw how we can include it into, um, our existing ordinance codes. Um, and I understand the one on animal restrictions. I think it's more specific because there might be certain sections in the City of Austin that are more, I want to say you have different users, um, in a space and they have different needs. Um, so different specifications to go with those. So I'm assuming that this is a more, um, this is more of a specification that is for that kind of, I want to say, location, um, where you have different users coming together to use the space.
But you're not recommending that we adopt that.
No, 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 no. So this, this, basically, this is this, these, I've given you, um, different options. So you can go through them and kind of mark out things that make sense for the City of Morgan's Point Resort and, and, uh, either include or exclude ones that you think can work or that you think don't work. They are there. So in the future, if you think there is expansion, then they can prove to be helpful resources.
So we should go through each one of these items? Okay.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
So this will go through P&amp;Z. I'm not sure what I understand. What do you want from council right now?
So I think from council, what we're looking as is a direction in terms of the options that we should consider, um, to be finalized. Um, so do you think a more detailed option such as option A, which goes through different sections of the ordinance code would be more appropriate? Or do you think a very high-level, um, uh, option would be preferable such as option B or option C? Which is just one section which we have found in either the City of Belton or when I looked at the smaller city examples like the City of, um, Lampasses. Um, so we can see what option the city council thinks is appropriate. And then the P&amp;Z can, if needed, can discuss further if that section is okay? Or does this action need to be, um, discussed further?
I'll have to read through it again because I didn't quite understand what it was supposed to be the last time.
Okay, um, yeah, I think there's quite a bit of confusion. I think what I would like to see for council and, and for me is, um, this is another thing that we seem to be kicking around quite a bit. Um, and maybe I'm just oversimplifying things, but, uh, we have Texas laws and we have federal laws that pretty much establish this. So it just seems, it really feels like we're getting the weeds, into the weeds on this. And we've been kicking around the ADA thing for six, seven months now. So, and, and I'm not blaming anybody. Please don't take it that way. But, um, I'm a simple stupid kind of guy. So what I need, I think for me, uh, and what I would like to see for council, is a very specific recommendation coming from P&amp;Z and code enforcement about this is what the law says. This is what you must do. If there are things that we can do above and beyond, I'm all for it. Um, but I, I just, I'm, I'm getting lost here. It, it just seems like every time we bring this up, it's, well, this is what ADA says and this is what Restaurant B wants to do and this is where the dumpsters are going to go and now the lake is low. And I'm just like, whoa. So, um, so that is kind of what I'm thinking for council. Is everybody else just? Is everybody else just completely lost in the sauce on this one, on where we're at?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where we're at. So, and it's not y'all's fault. I don't think it's anybody's fault. I just think there's a lot of confusion out there. So, so we can try to move forward on this unless any, anybody in council, or, I'm not trying to steal the show, but I, I think we just need a little bit more specif, that word, specificness.
If I was going to offer many options, I would keep it as simple as possible, but cover us legally.
Okay. Fair enough, yeah.
I think that's the big thing, quite honestly, with so many things that we're dealing with is we, we, we got to get the building blocks, we got to get the cornerstone of the house in place legally. And then we can start to look at some of the more deeper in-depth things.
Okay.
And you guys are the smart people, I'm not. So when you really dig into this kind of stuff.
Yeah. No, I think this is, this is the kind of direction that we were looking for because initially coming into ADA, that you have given, I say, direction, you know, simplify not as many sections. Now the P&amp;Z can discuss, sit down and discuss of coming up with that, you know, solution of maybe one or two sections, that's it.
Okay.
So this gives a, a good direction.
Counsel, are you guys okay with that? It's your decision, not mine. I just, I'm, I'm making it easy for me, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you want to real quick jump into 49 and then we have got to move on. I know I'm-
Okay, so for 49, these are changes that, again, have been recommended by Mike Reeves, the code enforcement officer. And I think these are, again, a lot of detailed recommendations which the P&amp;Z is going to take section by section. So I think, Ken, at the next P&amp;Z meeting, they're going to discuss these changes and then recommend the, the solutions at the next city council.
Okay, but, yeah. See, that's what I like there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I like. You made it simple for me. So, okay, so we'll, we do appreciate your hard work. Thank you very much. So, please don't hesitate to keep in touch. Y'all give me just a second to dig through my notes here, make sure I got everything covered. So, okay, we're going to cover, we're going to loop back around, we'll discuss budget. And then we will, like I said, we will cover the IFC in regular council meeting and then once we reconvene. So what we're going to do is adjourn out of the workshop-